... Well, thank you in person, we have form, we will continue. First, I'm gonna have a moment of silence for the officers that were killed in Barrow County last Saturday, followed by the invocation of Jonathan Underchutes and a pledge of allegiance will be presented by John Caleb. Could you all stand please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for that moment of silence. It's probably a good time for us as a community to reflect and appreciate the work our men and women in law enforcement do for us and to thank them. It can be a dangerous job probably on good days and as we've known from the events this weekend, things can get real tragic really quickly as well. Hallel, Father, we come to you before you tonight in prayer. First and foremost, we're asking for your hand upon the families that were impacted over this weekend with loss. We pray your comfort for them and comfort for the community and for your protection for our men and women in law enforcement. We pray that your wisdom, as us as the board members, we have questions to ask and things to consider and decisions to make. Give us the wisdom to make right choices for our community. Praying Jesus' name. Amen.
Praise your allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. A public comment, no one does five minutes per person.
Al Christensen, thank you for the time today. I'm aware that the county received pricing for budgetary purposes back in September for demo and asbestos removal at the old hospital. Demo bid being the same in both cases at 1.2 million, but the asbestos removal had a range because a study hadn't been done yet and that range was a low of 1.3 up to a high of 3.8 million. Also aware that there is 2.062 million for Marshfield as part of the hospital business sale that could be used towards that asbestos removal and demo. As you know, those costs are all quite substantial, even factoring in the founders three offer less their commission on the 7.5 acres between College and Port Arthur would leave the county short close to $400,000 on the low end scenario and 1.8 million short on the high end scenario. Is there a chance that the actual bids come in lower than the low end budget? Sure. There's also a chance they could come in higher than the high end. And where it's typically best practice to plan for the worst case scenario, which would be the higher end, and hope to come in below that. The only option that currently creates the potential for not needing to complete the 1.2 million dollar demo is accepting the housing proposal provided by Impact Seven, assuming they can secure their additional financing for reuse of the building. Otherwise, that demo cost is unavoidable. I guess I'd like to see the ability to give that option a chance, as it's really the only one that doesn't cost our community money. If it pans out, we as a county are up six figures. If it doesn't pan out, we're in the same boat as we are today, looking to make up anywhere from 400,000 to 1.8 million based off numbers that are seven months old. If the extra credits don't pan out for Impact, perhaps the city would be willing to assist with KID for the remaining teardown to go towards housing. Otherwise, it appears founders three would have an interest once the hospital is demoed and could be engaged at that time as well with those sale proceeds going to cover the difference. We are all the county. That six-figure sum we can stand to realize with an adaptive reuse is a substantial sum, something that could be put towards any number of important projects in our county: the jail, the highway shop, the roads, economic development, workforce housing for the 61% to 120% income bracket. Pick your priority. If it was my personal finances, I prefer to look at the option that allows me a chance to walk away with around $700,000 in my pocket and a few productive things happening instead of walking away with a much smaller sum, breaking even, or even having to pay a large chunk of change out of pocket. Some new retail opportunities, 700,000 in our pocket, and some new housing available for our low to moderate income employees, along with a training site to allow them and others to acquire new skills and certifications to grow their income sure sounds like a huge win all around. Now, maybe there's something I missed, miscalculated, or some information that isn't yet publicly available. I'd happily stand corrected if that's the case. As noted in the Impact Seven proposal, three other communities are pursuing the same type of development, making their communities more attractive for residents and businesses. Hopefully, we're willing to compete with those other communities. The county board has letters of support for the developmental workforce housing for many of our large employers that I provided previously, not just industry, not just in Ladysmith. This proposal doesn't directly impact them all, as some have starting wages outside the target range, but it does have a positive impact and addresses some of them, as well as healthcare positions like front desk clerks, CNAs, businesses in retail dining and service, where wages can be anywhere from $11 to $20 per hour, less with tips. Everyone here has likely had a loved one in nursing home care. Some of us will likely wind up there someday. When those CNAs are providing basic services that we all take for granted while we're able-bodied, and when they're providing comfort in the last moments of someone's life and cleaning them up for their family after they have passed away, are they worth that wage? I'd imagine in that moment, when it is our time or that time for a loved one, most of us would be hard-pressed to assign a dollar value. When they aren't there because they took higher-paying jobs to be able to afford basic housing, where does that leave us? I think there's definitely a win here to accept Impact Seven's proposal and let them move ahead and do their due diligence while also considering the founders three proposal on a separate property. It seems like it could just be an absolutely huge win for our community. Thank you very much for the time today.
Anyone else wish to speak?
Thank you for convening a special meeting this evening. Erin Webster for Bruce. I hope that hearing public comment will allow you all to come to this table with an open heart and mind. I've heard a few of you say at various meetings over the last few months that you have your minds made up even when there weren't any proposals on the table. This is quite interesting, and I hope that tonight you can come with a different state of mind. Housing is a critical issue in Ross County, and while we may do well with more retail businesses, it's certainly not a need like housing is. Being short on housing affects the number of people who can stay in our community, which reduces the number of available workers in our community. Nearly everyone is still hiring. There are a lot of factors that go into this reality, but one is that if people can't find adequate housing, they will not remain in or come to this community to be part of the workforce. It seems that instead of only going with one proposal, the county should entertain them both. Founders Three has a proposal to buy the empty lots, and this makes sense. Impact Seven's proposal to purchase the hospital building and land with the intent to either remodel or build new a 40 to 50 unit complex would be a tremendous value added for our community. The public has a lot of questions, there's a lot of misinformation, and hopefully not much disinformation. As I am sure nearly every one of you is aware, the public went round and round on Facebook pertaining to certain topics regarding these two proposals. It's unfortunate that the county never offered more information as questions came up. Many citizens did their best to understand the many issues and things to be concerned about. Many in the public think that $10 million to build the housing complex will be paid by the county. There's a question of property tax and how that would affect the city and our property tax rules. It would have been nice to have some clarification before tonight's meeting from the county's perspective. There are many ways to consider value added. One may potential new property taxes from the building of a new or remodeling the hospital for a housing complex. One is that we would have a beautiful new apartment building in our community. Another is cash from a sale for just the land. While founders three additional offer to purchase the land that the hospital sits on is for more money than Impact Seven's offer, that money would be spent so fast we'd hardly know we got it. We'd be left with open lots that might likely sit undeveloped. Or founders three could turn that around and sell that prime real estate and make a profit, in which case we should be countering their offer. This county deserves more than open lots that sit empty for possible retail use. It deserves more than selling those lots and having founders three sell down for profit. It deserves a housing development unlike anything we've seen here. I need you to put aside your preconceived ideas for this property and really consider what this community needs. Are our needs being met by selling land to what appears to be face value for more money? Or are our needs met by having someone else build new or remodel the old building and give this community a 40 to 50 unit housing complex? That cash in our county pocket is chump change when compared to what our community needs and compared to what founders three could sell for after the purchase. Think about this scenario. If I gave you $400,000 to have the lots sit empty or have me sell them in a year for more money versus if I gave you $80,000 and then built your community a $10 million housing complex, which feels like a better deal? Every one of us has said, "Man, I sold item X for this much money and the buyer sold it for this much more two years later." Now, there's a possibility that Impact Seven would not need to tear the hospital down, which would be a financial benefit to this county. While it could feel like playing the lottery because we don't know if that's a realistic possibility, the hospital has to be torn down in the founders three proposal. So while the teardown estimate shows it could be very costly, it has to be torn down in one of the proposals and we may get lucky with the other. Housing versus retail. Housing versus immediate cash in hand after purchase. I hope you all seriously consider the need for housing in this community. There are a lot of people relying on you to look out for their housing needs, and I ask you to consider voting yes to the 7.5 acre land sale to founders three and yes to the sale of the hospital and property to Impact Seven. This community deserves to feel more pride than just selling property. Let's feel pride that we can have a housing complex built, and I'm hopeful that other things can come from that. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak? Anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Krista Stansow. I have owned a business and also lived in Ross County and in the city of Ladysmith for over 30 years. I've served on the school board for the past eight years. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Things we should be keeping top of mind when considering plans for Ross County are summed up very well in the community needs assessment that was just completed in 2022 for our region by the Indian Head Community Action Agency. A quick overview of that report shows us that long-term concerns for Ross County are still in play, such as poverty, where we see 23% of our children and 12% of adults living in poverty. Wages, while improved, which are still trending far below the Wisconsin average. Also rural issues that we see across the country still prevalent here, with people reporting a lack of transportation, childcare, arts of recreation, physical and mental health services, education beyond high school, and affordable housing. At a time when our census has just shown the lowest population numbers in 100 years, we happen to have an opportunity to try and turn that around by working together to address our community's needs. We have recently vacated buildings resulting from our new hospital construction and adjacent land available for sale. The two proposals that came in seem to check off several boxes. They would bring in some income and create opportunity to provide much-needed affordable housing and job training tailored to our employer's needs and future workforce demands. These improvements could lead to more checks and boxes, like higher wages, better and more jobs, less poverty, and even the population growth that we need, which could help everyone from small to large businesses, from healthcare to education, to grow for their own success and to better meet the needs of the community. I hope to see the county and city come together for the future of Ross County. This will be one small step, but a very big step for us. I also hope to see people get behind, including our legislature, get behind our governor's budget and a lot of the upgrade proposals that he has in there. We're right in the middle of the Vianney budget, so I just wanted to let people know that there's a budget hearing tomorrow down at the UW O'Clare in the Davies Center starting at 10 o'clock, and everyone can have an opportunity to come down and talk about what issues are important to them and try to help, you know, not only our county but our whole state start filling in some of those other gaps when it comes to unaffordable childcare, unaffordable post-secondary education, unaffordable housing, and things that Wisconsin really needs to put attention and funding to so that we can really move forward. Thank you all, city and county board members and staff members, for your work on this big undertaking here and for your service and dedication to the community.
Anyone else wish to speak?
Good afternoon, I'm Steve Weiss, incoming city council member for District Five. I had the pleasure and privilege of meeting a number of you about a year ago when I was presenting our public health proposal that ended up being shelved for the time being because of funding concerns basically through Marshfield Park. I would like to echo what my fellow citizens have just said. I think that it would be a tremendous opportunity for the county, for the city, to move forward with the Impact Seven proposal. I have from O'Clare, as many of you know, I have some good friends there in connections. A guy I went to grade school with is Jack Kaiser, who owns Danbury, you know, it's a nice up in Winter. And, you know, we've had conversations about him making a proposal for this, but the kind of work that he's done is not the kind of work where you have to get grants involved in those kinds of things. So he wasn't quite comfortable moving forward, not having it be quite in his wheelhouse. So I'm also pretty good friends with Jason Woody. Jason Woody is one of the plan for the Pablo Group in O'Clare, for example, said to the Johnsons, he could help me and our board at the Chippewa Free Clinic with funding for fundraising and finding a building for a new clinical home. It was a tremendous group of people. Jason's wife is actually from this area. She's from the Cannon area that he's up here frequently. He knows exactly where the building is. If you've been in O'Clare recently and seen all the construction, most of that is Pablo. He's got his hands full with all sorts of things. He didn't say no for everybody, he says no now. And it would be a travesty from my perspective to have this building, this wonderful building with a lot of potential be demolished when there's a chance to change it, to repurpose it into housing that could be used by low-income workers, which is a real need and also to be working with the Technical College on Creighton. I strongly encourage you to vote yes for our proposal, it's the best that we have to work with at this point, so I thank you for your time.
Anyone else wish to speak? Anyone else?
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Joe McCupskey. I work at Rockwell Automation. I'm a production manager at Rockwell Automation, and I wanted to talk about the housing that we need very much so in the Ladysmith community. So Rockwell employs approximately 260 people in the community, many of which we have six full-time openings from quality manager, production supervisor, engineers, and the number one problem that we have is bringing people up from O'Clare or Medford, Milwaukee, you name it, finding housing for them. I just lost a supervisor from the Medford area that looked for housing for probably six months. I spend a lot of my time talking to my friends who are, you know, either business owners, own realty companies, or landowners and ask for opportunities to put these folks even temporarily. And then on an average year, we'll hire four to six interns and co-ops that will, again, will be looking for housing for these people. And in some cases, we'll have to ask them to drive from Rice Lake because Ladysmith does not have the housing available for these people. These people bring in revenue for the community and, of course, Rockwell needs these talented folks to survive in this area. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
Hi, I'm John Kenyon. I live and work in the expense of Ross County. I think most of what I wanted to say has already been said here, but I just want to hit a few points that I don't think that we mentioned yet. I do support selling the property to Impact, and I think that's a good deal for the community in general. I do think there's a few things that we're not considering though that we need to go through as a community before going forward with that project. I hate to sound like Bill Morgan, but I don't know if we know that the utilities in that area are set up for that. There may be additional costs. This looks like a good deal to start with, but is that going to cost, you know, us money if that could put us behind on where it would get us with tax revenue there? Other things to consider are things like police and ambulance calls, adding up 50 new units of housing in that area, and in addition, the former elementary school project that is still on track, adding another 50 or so housing projects in the city. We'll have quite a few residents here. So I just think we as a community need to think about what it's going to cost us. This isn't a free upgrade for us, it's not a big gain right away. And then the other thing to think about when we add 100 or so new housing is what that's going to do to our housing supply in Ladysmith and the surrounding community. A lot of these units here will be occupied. I think quite a few of them will end up being occupied by retirees. You know, there are very few people that actually qualify based on the income restrictions in the proposal by Impact Seven. I know we heard from Rockwell and Mr. Christensen gathering some letters from quite a few local employers. And going through the math, it's really hard. I just have a few notes. The entry level wages at Jowlin, one income earner would require five, a total of five members of their household to qualify to live in this housing proposal from Impact Seven. The lowest-paid employee at the paper mill last year, we had a household of six people with no other income earners to afford to live there or to qualify to live there. And there's quite a few others. Teachers, for example, I got their salaries from the Department of Public Instruction website, and unless they have a couple of other household members without income would not qualify to live there. But that does create the opportunity if people from our community, say for example retirees, are moving into this housing because they qualify for it, it will create additional housing stock in the community that they may be able to occupy at a more economical price point for them, and again, create housing for new people to move here, like the managers at Rockwell and such that otherwise would not qualify for this proposal from Impact Seven. I also think it's great that they're proposing this partnership with Northwoods Technical College. I think that's a great point, that we'll be able to keep high school graduates in our community. I think quite a few young people move away. They go to a tech school in Rice Lake or Chippewa Falls or La Crosse or whatever, and they never come back to our community. So I think if we're able to capture them right out of high school, they can have their technical degree path available here in this community, they're more likely to stay here. And I think that's good for our community, to keep our locals local here. And I also think the proposal from founders is a great deal. Having a little more retail space available in our community is good. We all know there's quite a bit of empty buildings downtown here, and some of them are starting to look a little run down, I guess. But just a short story, on Saturday, I rented a house to a new nurse at the new hospital that starts next month, and she mentioned she had all, she had job offers from everywhere. She's graduating next month, and so I asked her why she chose Ladysmith here, and she said because she could get Starbucks inside of the new hospital there. So I think that if we're, you know, as we add these amenities, if we have this retail space available, and there's all sorts of, there's hundreds of options that people have mentioned, you know, there should be a Culvers, there should be an R.B., whatever. You know, we can't do that if we don't have property for sale that's available for those sorts of functions. So I would encourage you to vote to accept both of these proposals. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak?
Hi, my name is Stacy Hamilton. I have been living up here and working at Marshfield Medical Center in Ladysmith for the last four years. And a huge misconception that some people have of what kind of people that workplace housing or affordable housing bring in is, you know, it's typical, but that is the reason that I was able to move up here four years ago. I was displaced from the Foxconn build down in Sturtevant, and after eight months of trying to find somewhere, I found a house in Weirhauser that was owned by Indian Head. When we first moved in, my total cost with rent and all of my utilities were around $800 a month, which is very affordable for a three-bedroom, one-floor house. It was good enough for my four-family household. And now with the cost of inflation all across the board with everything, still living in the same home, I'm looking at about $1,500 to $1,600 a month. My wages have not increased much, maybe less than a dollar in the last two years. So what's been happening a lot with people that I know with the costs rising due to new management companies coming in and buying up the properties and raising their rent, they've been having to combine households. I see that if the Impact Seven does come in and they open up more affordable housing for people that are in the workforce here, that those households that are conjoined with two or three, you know, normal-sized households into one, that would open up space for other people that could afford those homes in other areas. I'm having a very difficult time affording the increases, and I think that that would really help the community. I've been a CNA for four years, and I would hate to leave this community. I've actually been a CNA for over 10 years, so up here for four years, and I love this community. I love taking care of your family members and with, sorry, I'm a little nervous. I don't public speak very often. I would like to stay up here, and I am like right on the cusp of, I think, what Impact Seven is allowing for income requirements. I'm like, if I go over that, you know, Soviet, but I think that being able to split up other households that I've had to conjoin due to the increased costs across the board, I would be able to find somewhere more appropriate that we could afford that's not $1,500 a month. My water bill has increased 150% since 2019, not due to usage but due to increase in costs, and my electric bill has more than doubled. So that's all I can say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak? Anyone else?
Hi, my name's Chris Mullin. I'm also from Rockwell. I'm one of the supervisors there. I just wanted to take a few seconds, few moments, and maybe share my experience for myself and my family. So a little over a year ago, made the decision to move up north. Ladysmith community, Ross County, welcome to San Antonio. It's been a great experience. We've had a very difficult time securing housing. The first time I had the job offer, I spent a very stressful few months going back and forth, traveling from the Milwaukee area up here, looking, couldn't find anything, turned down the first job offer. Had a second opportunity to come up in the springtime and took a leap to fatal. I spent the last year looking, trying to secure permanent housing. I've met a lot of very helpful people. I've had to T.O.A., for all the members of the T.O.A. prior to the sale, I stayed there. I had a local resident reach out and say, "My house will be open for several months over the winter," allowing me to stay there, my family to stay there. I've got a four-year-old, my wife. We're still very happy with the community, still very happy while moving up here, but still haven't found that permanent housing. So we're still looking. Just met John the other day, and very shortly we'll be moving into one of his units, which is a little more long-term, which is going to have me feeling pretty good. Honestly, I'm new to the community, I don't have a large stake in everything, but I do ask everyone to consider a couple of ramifications, right? When I hear retail space versus places to live, I ask us to consider that the retail space means that we had employees, right? Joe talked about positions that we're trying to fill, difficulty that we're trying to fill, and if we just continue to bring retail into the area while, I appreciate the growth, the only thing that we're doing is stealing from other employers that are currently there. No surprise, Family Restaurant in town has been very good, my family and myself. When you go there and they're shorthanded, they don't have the right staff for the day and they look just worn out and scared, right? I got my hair cut today at Razor's Edge. I think they're looking for three or four stylists right now, right? So I'm hoping that moving into the community, I've got a two and a four-year-old, as I said, as they grow up, I'm hoping that, you know, their first job is at Family Restaurant. I'm hoping that, you know, that leads to bigger, better things, right, on growing the community. I'm hoping that, you know, that leads to bigger, better things, right, on growing the community. But if we don't have the housing and we're just continuing to bring in retail, essentially you're going to do a lot of what Milwaukee did, where you're going to start going outside of the community and outside of the county to bring in employer or employees. And you're going to have a very difficult time because you're not going to have the parting the caring of Rust County, of Ladysmith, of the communities around, of, you know, the people that live here, work here, and take care of here. So that's just, I wanted to take a minute to share my experience. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak?
Howdy folks. John Kaiser here, resident of the city of Ladysmith. There's probably about five different angles I can comment on this conversation, but I'm a Realtor here in town, third generation. I'm also on the industrial development court for the city of Ladysmith. We've had this conversation in every single one of our meetings since I was appointed to the board in 2018. Thank you. It's hard. It's a tough conversation. That's a beautiful location, you know, as far as prime locations in Rust County. It's probably one of the best locations. And all of us have had these conversations for years, I mean, since I was a kid. When my dad was sitting here on this board, we were having many conversations similar to this, and we're still at the hospital, but housing is a need. The question is, is how do we want housing to come to Rust County? The answer is, do we have a choice? This is another question. Do we have a choice? Because when I lived in Palm Beach County, Florida, I worked with a substantial real estate developer. We did a ton, a ton of single-family homes from raw land development. We did, we actually took an old historic hotel and renovated that into affordable housing, kind of a similar situation. But the difference between Palm Beach County, Florida, and Rust County, Wisconsin, one of the many differences, is we don't have that market for a private developer to come in and say, I got twenty million dollars to build us a brand-new building. And I think it's important for us to be cognizant of that. That piece of property bare is worth money, for sure. And someday, somebody will come and build something there if it's just a blank piece of land. I guarantee it. That day is probably not today, though, with the cost to develop property. We looked at the possibility of taking that building and doing exactly what Impact Seven is proposing, you know, converting it into housing. And while some of our members thought that it was a pretty good idea and that we should look, you know, look into this more, there were some members, including one member of the real estate industry in our community, that said, there's no way any private developer is ever going to come in and look at this and say it's going to work. So I just wanted to say that housing is absolutely paramount for the growth of our county, for the growth of our community. It is the most important conversation we can have right now. And we just don't have a lot of options, and I don't think we can screw this one up. My thoughts.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak? Anyone else?
I'm Tony Caesar from the Pomegranate, and also a business owner in Ladysmith. And when I first moved here forty years ago, more than forty years ago, I did some economic development in housing. So I'm quite familiar with the real estate market in terms of housing for the average person. I tell you, it is tough under the base climate for anybody to come in here and barapa a two-hundred-thousand-dollar duplex or three-hundred-thousand-dollar duplex and try to rent it out and try to get fifteen-hundred to two-thousand dollars a month rent. It isn't going to happen. So as far as Impact Seven, I'm also, in the past, I was an engineer. I looked at their building, but they converted in Rice Lake. It was an old school on W S or Main Street, whatever it's called. They did a super job, super job. So I'm, I think if they tackle the hospital, which is a sound building, except everybody talks about asbestos. And I can tell you how that whole asbestos thing got started way back when the secretaries at the Senate Building in Washington, D.C. complained that the contractors were priming the asbestos tiled floor. And the senators got so upset because of that, and they totally destroyed the asbestos building. And our twin towers had asbestos insulation. Those things would not have come down. I can tell you that. But anyway, what my main point here, which so far nobody has really talked about, is retail space. Have you guys seen how much retail space there is available in town? Some of the buildings, you know, you drive past it and you aren't even aware of it that they're actually empty. And I've talked to those owners, and they've been trying to get tenants. Forget the retail space. I don't know if you're familiar with our grocery store, The Fresh Market. That just got sold. I don't know how many of you are aware of that. Different buyer has come in because the original guy who bought it can't make it. There's just not enough. We don't have enough population to handle all the retail space that we do have. Especially in the downtown, there's a lot of empty buildings. So like I said, I saw, Impact Seven's remodeling projects. They're doing a super job, and I'm sure they'll figure something out for the hospital. Like I said, the hospital is in excellent condition. It could be easily converted into residential space, okay? That's all I have to say. I've been here many, many years. My wife's been here, and her relatives have been here over a hundred years. I'd like this community to keep it that way and make it healthy, and the Impact Seven's got a good program. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak? Anybody else? Anybody else? If not, public comment time is closed.
Okay, so I was going to introduce to the board from Impact Seven, Brett Erber and Carol Keen. They're going to give a little bit of an overview of the proposal that they submitted, and then they are here to answer any questions that you might have. So direct to Carol.
Good evening. I'm Carol Keen. Thank you for having us. So you all have before you the proposal that was submitted. The proposal includes one, two, and three-bedroom apartments and up to fifty units. After we complete a detailed market study, we'll be able to determine exact amount of units. This project would be a part of a greater initiative that Impact has called the Homes Initiative, where we're working with Northwoods Technical College to address the needs employers have and provide workforce housing throughout Northwest Wisconsin. Included in this apartment community would be a classroom and an area for mobile training units to be brought on-site to teach technical training such as manufacturing and welding. So that would be part of the housing proposal, would be the classroom would be included. I'm not going to talk to you about the need for affordable housing. We've already heard about it. We know it exists. By bringing this apartment community to Ladysmith, it will address the needs that everyone has spoken about. The numbers that we presented are for a new constructed building. We have not eliminated the idea of redeveloping the hospital site as if it exists. New construction would be approximately ten million dollars. Renovation of the hospital would be more. We do have initial costs for H VAC, fire, and plumbing. And we are exploring the use of historic tax credits to help offset the costs, the additional costs that would be incurred by redeveloping the site. Our units will be targeted, at this point, it'll be a mixed-income community. It would be serving households at the sixty percent level, just for example. This is not installed. We do anticipate having market rate units, but a family of four, at this time, the household limit is forty-eight thousand one eighty for income. And the rent on a two-bedroom is approximately one thousand dollars a month. Again, this is all a rough proposal based on work that we do. After we do the underwriting and have secured all the financing sources, we would be able to come back to the community with all of the exact information. This prop, this building would pay property taxes to the community. I know I've heard that mentioned. So it is a tax-paying, it would be a tax-paying entity. The units would include washer, dryer, ceiling fans, storage, internet, fitness center, community room, patio apartment, and the classroom as an amenity. Our development team includes Impact Real Estate Development staff. We have an architect that we work with, who has an office located out of Wausau. Our Impact has its own property management group with highly skilled managers and maintenance. We are proposing to work with Dave Cecil Builders, who's a builder that's located in the area that Impact did do work with and also did the Franklin School renovation. We have legal counsel, Hush Blackwell, and accounting consultants that we work with on a regular basis. We would propose a timeline to get site control of this property by the summer. We can complete our market study and our underwriting. We would hope to have all the financing lined up by the end of the year and have a spring groundbreaking. And the building is, would have a twenty, twelve-month construction time period, so we'd be open for leasing in the spring of 2025. Impact has been around for over fifty years. We have very high standards. We have a successful portfolio of over two thousand units throughout Wisconsin. And we're confident that we could do a good job and bring a wonderful apartment community to Ladysmith. I'd be happy to take any questions.
So what is the definition of low-income housing?
Affordable housing, well, low-income housing or affordable housing sets aside units for households at specific levels. There's thirty percent, which is lowest income. There's fifty percent. There's sixty percent, eighty percent. This eighty to one-hundred-and-twenty percent is considered workforce. So our initial underwriting is targeting people at the middle, at the sixty percent. That doesn't mean we will have some units at a lower, for a lower income set aside that will have a reduced amount of rent. And we may have market rate units that, again, as long as you make enough money with your job and can afford the rent, then you would be eligible.
So these, the high end is seventy-five percent of the low income. You're seeing sixty percent of low-income housing at eighty percent. So this is, this is lower than low-income housing?
What's the lowest?
No. Eighty percent of low-income housing here, right now, your proposal has a max of sixty percent.
That's just a target. We haven't finished, we haven't finalized it based on the underwriting. That's just how we ran our initial numbers, is that we're targeting some of the units at that. So there will be, it will be, you know, finalized once we would get site control and then do the market study.
So right now, the current proposal is a hundred percent of low-income housing?
We don't have the underwriting finalized because we only have rough construction numbers and rough financing numbers. So I can't tell you what the rent is without finalizing the cost of construction, whether it's new construction or it's rehab, and then what the cost of financing will be. But I'd be happy to keep in touch with you and let you know how we progress with our underwriting and how things look.
And then, so your proposal is to tear down the hospital and build new, or?
This proposal includes new construction numbers. We have some initial numbers for preservation of the building, but we did not have a full proposal. So I was unable to give you, this is what it's going to cost to renovate that building. We know it has a bad roof. We know it has environmental issues. We know what the environmental issue estimates are. We know the cost of renovating and replacing the fire safety system, the plumbing, and the H VAC. At that time, at this time, we have hard bits on that.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. You know, over the years, I served on the city block for twenty years. And, you know, we have housing projects moving in and out of the community. The thing is, what I always looked at is, you know, the management style. You know what I mean? You know, years ago, they'd just leave a six-hundred number, whatever they would call it. You know, maybe they'll get over there and fix it, maybe they won't. But the big thing is, we need management, we need rules. We need our working people and non-working people, different shifts, three different shifts. Sometimes people work on the weekend. You know, if you have fifty units here, then all of a sudden someone has to organize or at least manage what's going on inside the facility. You know, if I work all day and you know what, somebody keeps me up all night, I'm probably not going to be a real satisfied resident. You know, the other things that always used to bug me, you have fifty apartments, you know, in reading your proposal. But you know what, if you have fifty, you might have a hundred or a hundred-and-twenty cars, vehicles. Then all of a sudden, if you add the tech school too, which I think is a real good idea, you know what, those people are going to have to take that place. Then all of a sudden, you're, you know, I asked this question a year ago, and another company came talking about it. What about storage? Or would you say go out and screen an area downstairs? That's not going to cut it because I used to go by Cadot once in a while when they first built theirs down there. And one time, a guy had a bolt motor setting on the deck on the railing there. He wasn't going to use the whole winter. You know, those are the types of things, gasoline engines, anything gasoline. And everybody's got a hobby, even a gas grill probably shouldn't be in the basement of that building. Excuse me? So there's all kinds of things that should be looked at outside of the facility itself. And then the other thing is, when you get to fifty, you're in a spill. And all of a sudden, the folks from Allen Bradley and things like that that are moving in and out, well, are they going to benefit from that unless it opens up some homes in the community, which I hope it does? But it also can open up homes in other communities where people move in here, which isn't a bad thing either. But then all of a sudden, once your fifty units are filled, you're done.
Well, I guess I'll respond and let you know that we have a professional management company that is run by Impact, where we do have very strict rules. And there, we have managers and maintenance that respond to requests, and tenants sign a book of rules. So they're aware of them, and they are enforced. So we don't allow a boat to be parked in the parking lot. Cars that are on-site, they're registered with the office. If they're not registered, they're towed. So we, not to say that it doesn't ever happen, but it's taken care of immediately through onsite management that's very well-trained and is enforcing all of the rules. So as far as the lease up, we require one-year lease. And, you know, if, once you're in, if you renew and you're following the rules, then, you know, we'll accept you for continued tenancy. There's, you know, there's certain portion of a building that turns over every year. Whether, you know, we go first, come first serve with passing extreme criteria and affordability to pay the rent. So we typically start leasing up and marketing a property about six months before it opens. So we're very, we have very detailed processes and, you know, like I said, everyone signs the rules and everyone has to follow them.
Will the rules also include where sometimes Aunt Mary or Aunt Sally or whatever stop and visit?
Yeah.
But I mean, the thing is, sometimes they turn into squatters where they stay.
Well, we only allow two weeks. We can only have a guest for two weeks. And they have to be notified from the office, so that's to prevent the situation of the squatter.
Okay, very sound. Appreciate it.
Sure. Go ahead.
So what you're proposing is building workforce housing? Or would that not means you require what's supposed to be called a workforce, it would be legal-based?
At this time, like I said, we are still working on the affordability, how many units will be at which level. But we intend to serve lowest income. But we intend to serve lowest income.
Which is not, which is, which is not counted as that workforce, I don't think?
Workforce is kind of defined by different people, different ways. But generally, it's between eighty and a hundred and twenty percent of county median income.
Because when I was reading the proposal, it said something about a need for workforce housing. And I was assuming that was for like the worker that's working at a pad or whatever, or whatever else. But it would almost seem that the majority of the people working at factories probably wouldn't qualify. So I was wondering, would there be a requirement, if you're staying here for six months, that you're required to see full-time employment? Or would it just part-time employment is required?
When you apply to live at one of our apartment communities, you qualify based on your current economic situation.
So it doesn't have anything to do with employment?
No. No. It has with, it has with the ability to pay the rent.
So it's not workforce housing?
Well, it is considered workforce in that the rent is at a level that requires a specified income. Because in order to pay the rent, we normally charge, you have to have a household income of at least two and a half times the rent. So if the rent on a three-bedroom or two-bedroom is one thousand dollars, you know, you would need twenty-five hundred dollars a month in income in order to qualify.
No, we don't know if it's really, we don't know if it's really going to benefit the worker, the worker for the factory worker.
Our intention is to have a third-party market study, also reach out to employers to really understand what the, the jobs are paying and what the average household size is. And then to see how we can address the affordability of the apartment community to meet the needs that we've identified through our market study.
But at the current, right where you're at, right now, you're not, considering that is your first stop, doing workforce housing?
It's, like I said, we're, our attempt is that we will get the data from the market study and also from the local community employers and try to see how we can best target the needs of the community.
Yeah, I just question, because I think there were some emails that went out to different businesses. And they were presented that this would be for their people that are working there, that it does itself, and that's for sure the case.
We, we haven't.
We don't know yet.
We don't know yet. But we're certainly cognizant of the need and what, again, evaluating the data. Yes?
Oh, here, could you speak up, please? Of your existing facilities that you have, that you have, you know, that are in place and service?
Yes, yeah.
How many of your tenants there actually, like, work in the city where it is? Or do you have some that actually rent there and go to another community for their job?
I don't have the demographics from our existing portfolio, but I can get it for you. And I'd be happy to report that because we have.
Is it how, how much you actually, you know, help a community as opposed to just set up some housing for people that found it affordable for them to live there and came to another community? That's kind of not what we're looking for here, I don't believe.
And, and there are ways that we could address that through a local preference or something like that. And if that's, you know, something that the county would like us to look at in conjunction with the site, we can, I can be happy to discuss it with our leadership and our management group.
And then also, I, your rating doesn't seem to be, like, you know, the greatest. I mean, it seems like, like, on a five, you would be rating about a two-point-five.
On Google, are you talking about, or?
I can't really remember exactly where I read that.
Better Business Bureau, Business Bureau.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I could respond to a couple of things. One, the Better Business Bureau, my, I don't know what the statistics are, but we'd be glad to give you references from all over the state of Wisconsin that you could call and check. You don't have to go very far either. You go check in Rice Lake or, or wherever we have housing and, and talk to, to county folks or municipal folks, voting that seven.
I, I guess that's fine. That's all fine and dandy. But I guess what I would be more interested personally would be is, why exactly, what are the reasons why you're not fine instead of a two-point-five?
I would suspect that a lot of property management companies that, from time to time, have to file evictions because, because residents don't pay, probably, probably have low ratings. So I would guess that would be true with most property management companies who are, who are doing their jobs. I mean, we, you know how it is, sometimes, sometimes you have to say no. Sometimes you have to move people out of an apartment and that doesn't make people very happy. But it's the right thing to do in cases. So, you know, you don't get popular always by doing the, doing the right thing. And so I, I would guess that's the majority of the case. And then if I could just respond to, to the, just the, the need of the workforce, affordable, low-income version. I think that we probably all in this room understand that housing is needed probably at every income level. Certainly, we don't disagree that housing is needed at the hundred, hundred and twenty percent income levels. I think the challenge though is that funding doesn't really exist. To put housing like that in communities right now in this rate environment or with the construction expenses where they're at, it's really hard to build housing for like a hundred and twenty percent of area median income because the cost of the housing is so expensive that nobody would pay the rent. And there isn't any subsidies or grants or funding for, for that. But what we do know is that there is funding for sixty percent, for example. And, and there's a need there too. Somebody spoke earlier in the day and, and mentioned that a lot of times what happens is even when you have people, like elderly, move into a sixty percent unit, it generally frees up a house in the community that a person at a hundred and twenty percent or a hundred percent could purchase, rehab, and recycle that housing stock. So you have people in a community move around to move into sixty percent units. I can tell you that there was a market study done a couple of years ago. And that was prior to the approval for the Lido Avenue project at the old elementary school. And what that showed is that under sixty percent of area median income in Russ County, three hundred households would qualify for that. Now, that isn't three hundred households, just three hundred households. Three hundred households that currently are renters qualify for that. And the percentage of people who actually do live in that type of unit in Russ County is about nineteen percent of that three hundred. That's called a penetration rate. And so what we know is that roughly three hundred households would qualify to live in these units. And that only roughly sixty units are actually there to fulfill that purpose. So if you add forty units of sixty percent units, you're still not even reaching a third of the demand. So it's one of the reasons, you know, we're looking at Ladysmith. We don't want a housing project that doesn't work either. We won't do a housing project that doesn't work.
You're not ones that do the management for the Russ County Housing Authority area?
No. No, so we, we're making a big investment if this project were to go forward too. And we're not interested in, you know, putting a bunch of money into a project that's going to end up in the dry. So, so we'll, one of the parts of our due diligence is just doing a, a market study to find out really exactly what the need is at every income level, what people can afford to pay in rent. And that helps us, helps inform us of the type of units we should put in into the building.
Randy? Yes, thank you. Yeah, I should point out that Impact Seven does have experience here in Russ County. As they managed our Russ County Housing Authority for several years. Unfortunately, one of our problems was vacancies and they thought this would be a problem.
And I should also mention too, we, we do have housing in Russ County. So Impact Seven isn't Russ County. They have one in Ladysmith, years behind the Mida.
Do you know what all the issues with the Russ County Housing Authority are? Have you guys a part of that management group?
No, when Randy was speaking, we, we helped the Housing Authority of some of their units probably seven years ago or something.
Not really, man?
No. We're not involved in it. I don't even know what the current status is. But we, there were, there were issues, compliance issues, reporting issues, and we helped catch all that up. And we haven't been involved in it for several years. But William Bechtel Villa, right behind the Old Mida, the connection store, is in the Back Seven building. Who have a Back Seven building in Glentura. So we, we're right here in Russ County, have been for many, many years.
Good well, if you have any questions for us? Mr. Willard, yeah?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a couple of questions. Someone alluded previously, I think Mr. Fisher's gonna mention the study that was, a need study that the community needs, that was done by a community action agency. And I know that the three top needs that were identified was affordable housing, transportation, and affordable childcare. And these three needs are not only serious needs in Russ County and Ladysmith, but they have, they're interconnected. You can do all you can for housing. And if people can't get to work, or if people don't have a reasonable place to take their children for childcare, they're still not going to come and occupy the house. I do believe that there are efforts in place or in moving in the right direction to address all of those issues. And this is the piece of those issues. That, again, if someone's looking to develop more affordable childcare, they need workers and children to, to be placed with in that housing area. There's a really critical need for affordable childcare right now in Wisconsin. County's Association has recognized the extent of that need and has started some, some projects along with the state of Wisconsin to encourage more childcare facilities, particularly to develop non-op type of childcare where people are certified childcare providers, or licensed childcare providers that can charge more. Right now, I think the only large childcare provider in Russ County is the Tenner Learning Center. My understanding is that an understanding, learning center is going to go exclusively with children in the early head start program because that's the only way they can make it work. So there's, continue. I, I know a family where the person has to take their children, they have two children, they have to take them to two separate childcare providers because they can't find anywhere they can take most of their children at the same time. So childcare is an issue that, there are some things going on to address that. Housing is an issue. Reference was made prior to, it's certainly likely that some people might, might rent their apartments and not work in, in Russ County. There are lots of people that live in Ladysmith and in Russ County that don't work in Russ County right now. And there are lots of people, and the business people in the audience can tell you, there are lots of people who work in Ladysmith and in Russ County that don't live in Ladysmith and Russ County. They come from, County has any number of employees that, that work for the County and do not live in the community where they work. That's just the way things are nowadays. And so I think that even if people don't work here, they still live here, they still patronize the businesses. Same thing is true of retail outlets. There's an interconnection. The more people that we can, and workers that we can bring into the community, people are going to patronize the retail outlets. Unfortunately, the retail outlets that are downtown, I think once, or at this, once Walmart came to town, the, the retail is going to be out on the road, not in, not downtown. It's just, I'm sure now you weep about that on a, on a steady basis, but it's true. People are looking for retail space, vacation to, other retail space and other opportunities. So all in all, I think my review of the project is, as Randy was presenting. I think we should also remember the founders' proposal. I think these are two proposals that really worked well together. Could be a win-win for, for Impact Seven, a win-win for founders three, a win-win for Russ County and Ladysmith. One of the costs that hasn't been considered, and probably just because of time and distance, we're talking about how much money we're going to get if we sell this land, how much money we're going to sell the building. Does anyone remember how much money Russ County paid for the land that we're now talking about seven? Randy, do you remember? Randy? Do you remember how much we paid for the, the finance center site?
One point two.
One point two million dollars. So that was, that was a long time ago. It belongs to us and we can sell it. But we're not even going to get, you know, in any proposal right now. We're not going to get all we already spent. So I think, so this is, we can wait a while and see if somebody else comes along. But I don't, everybody that could come along has already seen the RFP and we got one response. And it's a good one. And I think we have a supportive thinking.
Anyone else with the screen?
Yes?
I want to ask a question. You're talking about older people retiring possibly moving into that. And I know with Russ County Housing Authority, because it happened, somebody I know quite well, she sold her farm, so that's kind of mine. She didn't even think she could get in there. But that wasn't her income. That was her assets. Does yours work the same way? Your assets don't count against it? It's only your earnings?
Um, to qualify for the housing is, you have to have enough money to pay two, like I said, two and a half, three, three times the rent. And then the assets are imputed. The value of the assets are imputed. Or wait, no, it's only income that's counted in order to, because there's no, there is no rental subsidy affiliated with this apartment community.
You're talking about to sell their house, move in there, and then somebody else come back and buy their house. They're going to blow all that money trying to lose something. That's what I'm asking.
Anyone else with the screen? What's up?
From what I'm understanding and what I'm hearing, it sounds to me where your rent levels are going to be are literally going to price most working families all the chance to have housing there. And in that case, that is not a better process. I'm not saying we need basically low-income subsidies housing. But what you're talking about, by the time you buy groceries and everything else for the family, they're not going to be able to pay the rent by doing everything they need to do for the family with the incomes that are earned along with the housing.
As Brett indicated earlier, we are, we do review a market study that was done in the community a couple of years ago. And they did identify the number of people who would be eligible households to, that could afford the rent and what levels they are at. That's, we will engage for our own third-party market study to determine the number of households and the income levels that could be satisfied based on the, the study that's performed by a third-party appraiser. So that's, that would be the next step after we secure site control.
And if I could, I could just add to that too, if, if this, this helps. We don't set the rent lo- levels just all on our own. The rent levels are set by Wisconsin Housing Economic Development Authority down in Madison. And so this housing would be based on income as a threshold, but then the rent levels are established by WIDA for the state of Wisconsin. So. So they they study this on a regular basis to determine what they would consider affordable rent that would allow families to, you know, support themselves in all the other ways. In fact, I think that the rent numbers that you mentioned even include utilities, for example. So so all utilities included in those numbers. So then if I can help answer to the other question, this is based on is based on income and and not assets. And a little bit different than some of the other programs. What we're looking at here is is to use tax credits, a four percent tax credits, which is a little bit different than the other tax credit projects you already have in town, which is section forty-two, nine percent tax credits. And those projects, like in the elementary school, they'll have units that are at thirty percent, fifty percent, and sixty percent they'll have, and then they'll have a few at market rate rents. The four percent that we're proposing to use is just slightly different than that, and it's likely we wouldn't be, we wouldn't have nearly as many rental units at the lower level. Our goal is to have some eighty percent in in market rate units in here too, but but that always just comes down to math. I mean, either the project, you could afford to put them in there or you can't afford to put them in there. I think one of the, one of the advantages that the county and Impact Seven has in this is the county has an opportunity to save potentially a little bit of money. I don't know what the the actual cost for a teardown and removal of asbestos is to that building, but we know what the high end numbers are. And that that sounds like it's maybe nearly a couple of million dollars more than the county has in the fund to tear it down. One of the reasons we're looking at potentially doing a rehab of this building is that that could potentially bring a little bit more money into the project than we otherwise would have access to. And the reason that is, is that we believe that that building could be registered as a historic building. And so what that means is we can apply for what's called historic tax credits, which will bring additional money in to do the bill of of that building. Of course, if there wasn't a building there, then we wouldn't be able to apply for historic tax credits. And so the benefit of that to the development is that could potentially bring a couple of million dollars more to the project. The reason that's important is that building a sixty percent, forty, fifty unit housing project is not easy. We don't even have the numbers work out yet. So this isn't a situation where Impact Seven is coming to the county board and asking you to sign a paper tonight to sell this building to us because we we don't know if we can get the numbers to work. This is how every development project happens in Wisconsin. You start out with numbers that look really, really negative and you work with them till you get the pro forma to work. And so what we're proposing is just to take some time and continue working with us. It sounds like you have a couple of years to to demo the building anyway. And if we can never get numbers to work on this project, then you still can demo it. And you can still-
So you're saying that even if we accept your proposal, this isn't guaranteed that you'd need time?
Oh, absolutely, yeah. We we we're asking, we're asking to work with the county through this process. Yeah, we won't, we won't cut a check, we're essentially asking for an option. But that's the same as the Founder's Three proposal you have. When you take a look at that, nobody's offering to buy that, they're basically offering to broker it. That's what the proposal says. So, and for a commission.
Much of you better opt to tear it down because you're not saving a couple of million dollars anyways. Would you be interested in the the property tore down?
Sure. I mean, our numbers were based on new construction. New construction is easier because, I mean, we can nail down the the cost to to build. We already pretty much know what that's going to cost, and then that's just-
Then you can just cut out the demo part if it was already demoed.
Sure. But you could potentially save two million dollars if those demo costs really are that high. And we could potentially get two million dollars more using historic tax credits if our application would be successful. It's just we need a little time to find out whether that's true or not. And it sounds like the county has that.
The biggest worry for us too is time because it takes too much time and we're out of money.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, do you have competitors?
Competitors?
Yes.
It's a, it's an interesting question. There are other development entities like Impact Seven all over the state. And we we compete in the sense that we apply for tax credits at the nine percent and eight percent level, and those are competitive applications through the state of Wisconsin. But four percent tax credits are not competitive, so we wouldn't be competing against anybody there. The reason I'm kind of hesitating a little bit to answer your question is that certainly there are other development companies out there. But it's so challenging to get a development project to work that that when you do finally get one to work, you know, it's 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 a very good chance that nobody else, you know, has been in the game. And these development projects take a long time too. That's the only reason I'm kind of hesitating to answer your question. It's not like you put a bid in and you get a project and it happens. This project's gonna take eighteen to twenty-four months. And so you either are working on a project or you are not working on a project. And so in that sense, we don't really have competitors. So North Point Two's developing the elementary school in Ladysmith. We know those folks, they're good developers, they'll do a good job there. We know, we know their work. And they were awarded tax credit projects, but we never applied for that building. So we didn't really compete against them for that building because we never, we never applied for credits for it.
So if, so there are other, other entities out there that actually do the same thing that you do?
Oh, a lot, yeah, 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 for sure.
And, but you do get into a to a certain competition, right?
Well, we apply for nine percent or eight percent?
I mean, obviously, there's a lot of companies out there, more than one company may be interested in a particular project, right?
Oh, for sure. Yeah, we've, we've applied or we've responded to RFPs where there were a dozen different responses to RFPs. And we've won some, we've lost some, yeah.
Who would you consider to be your biggest competitor?
Except we're so, so commonly, we're working on different projects and these, the due diligence takes so long that you're either working on a project, I mean, you're generally working on a project on your own. Only at, only when it comes to RFPs we compete. Or when it comes to actually applying for tax credits, we compete. But but outside of that, you don't really compete because you work on different projects. We have relationships with lots of developers all over the state, and there are a lot of good ones, for sure.
You stated that it would probably take you between eighteen and twenty-four months, basically, just to get your ducks in a box.
Well, no, I mean, the whole, the whole process of construction and everything, these projects are long. So it may only take six months just to put together the, just to find out whether the financing structure works. And we're in the, at six months right now. And once construction starts, that'll take twelve months. So the the whole process takes eighteen to twenty-four months for sure, yeah.
So probably six months to figure out if you've got the grants or whatever you need for this?
Right, and we've put a timeline in there. So it does take, if this, if this building is considered historic, and we think that it probably is, one, will that cost money to get that designation, which we're willing to pay as part of due diligence cost to do that? But but that takes some time. And then we'd have to make an application for four percent tax credits. It's not competitive, but you have to meet a threshold requirement, like you have to reach a certain threshold of points to to score for that. There are other funding sources that we'd apply for, and those take time. It just takes time to get all the architectural, all the mechanicals, all those things all ironed out. This wouldn't be the only one of these meetings. I mean, we'd be working with the county and the city because people are gonna have preferences on how, you know, some of the rehab works. And we're gonna be sharing our pro forma, we're gonna be sharing the types of units that are in here. And we're talking to the community in general about, you know, what they want to see. And we'll also be conveying what we can and can't do based on the numbers. So just all of that planning, it just, it takes a lot to put together a, you know, like ten, fourteen million dollar project.
Your proposal is only for the the land itself where the hospital sits, correct? It doesn't include any other-
That's correct, yeah.
-dwelling property that we also own there, right?
That's, that's correct, yeah.
Okay. You think for that, what it would roughly, is there an acre maybe?
Yeah, with the hospital sitting?
Yeah.
It's a, quite a bit more than that.
It is.
I I want to say like five acres or so where the hospital is sitting.
And you're just offering us eighty thousand for the property, for the land itself?
Yeah, that was a, that was a placeholder because we, we know that this process, we just know that this is a long, you know, process where we, we need to work together in order to accomplish it.
I think considering, considering the fact that that is prime commercial real estate, I think it has to snowball.
Well, yeah, I I hear what you're saying, but right now there's a potential four million dollar liability sitting on that land. I mean, I think that's the other side of the the coin is that it could cost, it could cost four million dollars to to tear out all the asbestos and and tear it down. And so I'm not sure what it's worth.
Well, I mean, wouldn't you buy that with the understanding that, you know, that's your responsibility? We're supposed to give you the land essentially just because it might cost you a lot of money to to deal with the asbestos?
It might cost us a lot.
It's gonna cost, yeah, it's gonna cost the county a lot of money one way or another. We, one of the things we think too about, if if the building's not torn down, some of that asbestos can, you know, can just be encapsulated in there. It doesn't all have to be torn out. If you tear the building down, it all has to be torn out. But, you know, pipe wrap, asbestos tiles, that commonly is encapsulated in building remodels. And so there's certainly be somebody going into a building to tear it up, tear it up asbestos when you're rehabbing, but but you don't have to tear out nearly as much asbestos if you're doing a rehab project. That's why I say that this is a potential win-win situation for the county, could potentially save a bunch of money, and we could potentially pull in some money into a development project. And again, we don't know if that's gonna work. We'd like a little bit of time to try though, because I think it would benefit everybody in the community.
What's up?
Because I imagine it's gonna take some time to just, to measure package together. Any idea how long that turns to be? Okay.
We're hoping it would be, we'll have a very good idea within the next sixty days or so. We've been meeting, we meet every, you know, week, we're working on the underwriting and, um...
So you you put this package together and you don't get approved. So now that's sixty, ninety days that are gone. Always under the clock to tear it up. Two years, starting May first. And we have money set aside by the hospital for the tear down. But we only have two years. If it's not torn down in that timeframe, we lose that money. So time is a mess. We can't afford to pass that clock up and lose the two million and still be stuck with the building. For example, if we make that sell, nothing happened to it. At least we, at least we need to get, take advantage of the money that they, right now, wanted to take for us.
Yeah. I certainly can appreciate the timeframe that the county's under.
The other thing of it is, if the county goes in and decides to tear it down, with respect to the Impact Seven, Impact Seven still wants this down, Impact Seven still could come back in and, uh, build a project.
We could. Yeah, we, we could.
There's really no overriding effort as far as to hang out to on the ocean with Impact Seven at this point in time.
Well, we're under a timeframe too. Our homes project that was funded by W E D C pushed six million dollars towards this project. Not this one specific for Ladysmith, but our homes project where we're gonna build a hundred and forty units in in northwest Wisconsin. And we have only a certain amount of time to spend that money too. So we had, the reason we're here, we submitted a proposal is because the city of Ladysmith responded to an RFP that we put out. And we're, there were nine proposals received, we selected four along with the tech college to to look at. Ladysmith was one of them because of the market here. But but there's, you know, there's a lot of, you're right, we might not get approval to go forward. I have, I often tell people, there's a thousand different ways real estate development projects, you know, fall apart and die. And County Board meetings is 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 an example of one of them. But but a lot of them do go forward. And, you know, if we're not, if we're not doing it here in Ladysmith, we will be doing it someplace else. We've got money to spend and to put housing in. We'd like to do it in Ladysmith because I think that there's some advantages to that building that exists there. We, I have to tell you, we we prefer just new construction. But but in order to pull a couple of million dollars more to a project like this, we think that that can help. If it saves you guys money too, and you've got a little bit of time, I I think it's, I think it could be a win-win. We're not interested in just keeping it on a hook or dragging it out forever. We've got things to do too. We've got other communities that we're working in. Hayward right now, Minon, Hurley right now, and St. Croix Falls. And so we've got a lot of work to do in those communities too. So as soon as we would find out that we don't get approval or the numbers aren't working out or there's nothing we can do, we'll just tell you, and then you can do what you do.
Mr. Meyer, just to clarify, from understanding you tonight, what you kind of said, bringing to the line, you have questions. There's a lot of, you've got a lot of basis behind these numbers right now that you can stand behind? I mean, is that fair to say?
Yeah, that's, that's pretty, that's pretty fair to say. I mean, we, we do a lot of development all over the state, so we have a pretty good educated idea on what this could take. But we don't have the numbers fully worked out yet. For example, we could use another two million dollars to come in from historic tax credits to make this project work. And so that could help, just as an example. So we don't have the numbers worked out, so they're in the black yet. But like I had mentioned, that's common at this stage of a development project. I can tell you that the elementary school, nine percent tax credit deal, they didn't have that project and the numbers worked out until just real recently. That hadn't worked out this whole time with that spending project. So that's just the way these development projects go.
That's kind of the note being that's the comment saying the brand you help with the project.
That's, that's how, that's how these, all these development projects go all over the state. They're hard, they're hard, they're hard to put together.
Another question I have for you, I think, at least I'm thinking it, and maybe some others are not. I guess what gets us a little nervous here, or I'll just speak for myself. If we enter into this type of project and twenty-two months down the road, you guys decide this isn't gonna work, we're gonna be left, in a sense, possibly holding a bag you wanted to walk away from. Are you gonna try to sell it? I mean, I mean-
That's a, that's a really-
Or we're gonna end up with a livestock sitting on a riverbank that someone's gonna have to build down the road and decide what kind of do it.
Yeah, that's a fantastic question. And what I can tell you though is that on projects like this that involve tax credits and so many different entities involved, that once you get to closing, they happen. And the reason that is, is that, for example, this project would include the tech college, includes Impact Seven, includes the counties involved, includes the cities, the cities involved, it includes the Wisconsin Housing and Economic Development Authority, WEDA, it includes W E D C, it includes Wisconsin Department of Administration, it includes the state of Wisconsin. It'll actually include the National Park Service because of the historic tax credits. And beyond that, it'll, it'll include a couple of big banks. And then beyond that, probably- And then beyond that, probably the most important part of it is that it will include a tax credit investor. So the way tax credits work is that we'll apply for tax credits, they would get awarded to us. We actually take those tax credits, they're real, they're real tax credit, and we sell them. We sell them to an investor. And when that investor money goes into a project and you close the deal, then you go forward. And the reason that is, is because Impact Seven and a lot of executives have to sign a guarantee to that tax credit investor that, that the, that the construction happens and that the project will operate on an annual basis. And even if it operates on the red, we feed it. And so, we have to sign a, a number of guarantees to make sure the project happens. Besides the fact that the general contractor is gonna be bonded, there's a lot of regulations that go into projects like this that involve tax credits, that once you hit the table and you close, they always happen. Like literally always.
Mr. Whitaker?
Just for complete disclosure, I think, uh, Mr. Gerber, you're the president of Impact Seven?
Yeah, that's.
And you're also the treasurer of Northwoods Technical College Board.
Yes.
I just think that should be brought up, that.
Sure.
If you're having that Northwoods would be part of that in, in essence, I think for full disclosure.
Sure.
That you're on both.
Yeah, I'm on the, the board for the, um, the technical college.
Right.
Have them for a number of years, was appointed by, um, by the, the county board chairs at, um, um, because it's an appointed position. Uh, but, um, it's a really unique opportunity, uh, for, for the tech college to have a permanent place, um, where they can actually pull in, you know, semi-trailers and do welding onsite, uh, for the manufacturing companies, for residents. And this is really a fantastic, um, thing. In fact, it's the first time it's, it's happened, um, in Wisconsin. D O A hasn't had money to do this before, um, where they could partner with, um, technical college this way, so. It's an important part of this.
Any other comments or questions? All the time. Mr. Willian?
I have a real quick question, Mr. Gerber, thank you. Um, you said that basically this discussion tonight is, is, uh, we arrive at some conclusion or continue to move forward and work together. So, we're not, you know, giving us a, an offer to purchase and we're not, uh, accepting.
Right.
So, but at some point, we will, or we won't, but you will make an offer.
Right, absolutely.
So, can you, in this six months, twenty or two-year framework, can you give us an idea of, you know, approximately when you think you will be firing us along to make that offer?
Sweet question. I, I would think by the end of the summer, we'll know, we'll know everything by the end of the summer. Um, it just takes a little while to put some of these things into place. And that's, and that's, like I said, it's like the other proposal you have for the other lots, it's, nobody's writing you a seven hundred thousand dollar check tomorrow. In fact, they gotta find a buyer first that they can sell to before they actually buy yours, is how their proposals look.
So you think maybe.
And ours is an option too.
End of summer, would be September, uh, September? I mean.
Yeah, we'll, we'll know.
Up until a couple of days ago, we weren't sure we were gonna have summer, so.
We'll know, we'll know by then whether we can get things to work out and then, um, and you'll know a lot of our details too at that point. So, yeah, certainly we're not asking for approval to sell it to us and we wouldn't buy it just because of, like we talked about, there's a, that's, it's a, it's a liability on that property right now.
But we're not talking about. We would be, we would be making that agreement long before the, the two years.
Oh, yeah, well, we would make that at the end of the summer.
Right.
Yeah, we'll know. We, we need to know by then, um, since we have a deadline too.
Any other questions? Now we're gonna move on to number two on the agenda.
Thank you.
Number two.
Thank you.
Tony Martin, supervisor of the Hossville Hospital, working with your team to an agreement with Impact Seven for redevelopment. We'll put it in order, please.
I'll make a motion to reject the proposal.
What?
To reject the proposal. Two dollars.
Ten dollars.
From, from Impact Seven, just sorry. Um, the reason for that is, um, with, uh, the timeline, we can still proceed, we can still demo the building, or get the asbestos and the environmental concerns taken care of. Either way, that's gonna have to be done. We can always revisit options down the road. But there is that, that wind down funding, that's a couple million dollars of money that I think could be dangerous to gamble with and things that went through. And I think we're ready to go for that. I believe we're ready to continue on that path of, of survey and demolition this summer. If we wait till the fall, that puts us behind April. Again, we can always, it's, either way, it's gonna be advantageous to them if we dealt with it down the road. So why not, can proceed with the route that we both, we've done anyways? And we can always check our options for that again if we want to.
So, the clerk just wanted, is it your motion to reject the Impact Seven proposal and proceed with the demolition, the demolition, or just to reject the Impact Seven?
I would say proceed with the demolition. We'll proceed with the demolition, must, tough to change, right?
Yeah, just a little bit, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Can you, uh, can you make that? So, it's a motion by Judge, uh, which is to reject the Impact Seven proposal and see what's going on with the project.
Right?
Yes.
We have a motion, talking, Charlie, uh, shut up, I don't think there's a.
Yes, yes.
Any discussion? Go ahead.
I know, there's, there's still a lot of questions in my mind of the whole scenario out there. I think their, Impact Seven is not being well done, walking, um, Northwood College, where would that be? And what's our status in a little clinic building? I'm not sure, there's not too much work to act here. Mr. Willian, I've asked it on.
I think, Mr. Chairman, I, I might want to take a quick turn.
Probably save some, single a little bit, I don't know, haven't been in it. Should we be looking at an auction, if it is some of that stuff?
So, most of the stuff, if not all the stuff, should be, I'm still pretty exposed because when I did the asset purchase agreement, it was four years ago, they acquired all we personal property asset held there as part of it. First, um, stained glass windows are gonna ask where you're going from the chapel part, and that's gonna take some time. We want that, I guess.
And then how does, how does the old clinic building fit into the whole scenario?
This does not come with the clinic.
I know, but it's, it does to me, it, you know.
People that own the clinic have a one-term lease on the parking lot.
We've got those parking lots up there that are on loan. With leases on them. I don't think we can even sell that property because there's leases on them. Their proposal has nothing to do with parking lots, it's just, I know, but I'm looking at the big picture. I'm trying to anyway.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I, I just take a few more minutes. Uh, well, I can understand a certain amount of hesitancy to make the, uh, full-blown commitment to the Impact Seven proposal tonight. I would think that for all of the same reasons, it would be, not be prudent to make a decision to reject their proposal and to immediately, uh, proceed with the demolition. I think that would be very narrow-sighted and, uh, this doesn't seem to make sense to me that we can make that decision so quickly when we don't know, when we don't know all the numbers, we don't know all the factors, we don't know, we still don't have a firm bid on what it will cost to tear it down and where the money's going to come from, because we know how much money we've got available on the wind down. And we know it almost certainly going to cost more than that, and where's that money coming from? And we can't spend the seven hundred thousand from the other offer until that, we don't have that in our pockets either. While they agree, we have, we need to, we need more time to consider the proposal for Impact Seven. We certainly need more time to consider, uh, a commitment to demolish the building.
We can't keep picking this down the road with Mr. Willian.
Well, down the road, uh, I don't know. Can we or can't we? I, I, I just think it's very short, short-sighted and very, uh, a very imprudent decision to make in, in haste. And I would definitely encourage everyone to back down a little bit and, and take a look at this and not seriously consider a commitment to, to demolish the building immediately. That's it.
Lewis?
I was just going to ask about the es- if we already have an estimate on, on auction cost? They said, no, we have not. Sorry.
I got one back a little, a few months ago from H O S. We should, we should.
Could you go up there, please?
I got one a few months ago from H O S, construction on a foreign player, and, uh, we have it on file, uh, I think all the county board members actually have it, or was he not?
Do you remember what it was?
It's one point two maybe, did I? If I remember correctly. Uh, one point two new. Plus, uh, you know, the, well, the asbestos, uh, I believe the asbestos come in at, uh, like, uh, they couldn't give a definite answer because they never did survey, uh, which I believe they, uh, will be done very shortly. Um, but, uh, I think that come in at one point three to three point eight, probably. I mean, worst case scenario.
Thank you. Mr. Anderson?
Oh, yeah, and I was told I made the motion to have the R P L because the same reason that, that could be potentially costing savings. But given the timeframe, I think our best course of action to reject it, we can always circle back down the road if we feel that's the right move. But either way, that's gonna have to be some environmental, I think in Impact Seven's proposal, they have used our estimate as well. So either way, that's gonna have to be done, why not get it done and not lose that time, that other time and then put two million dollars of taxpayer dollars at stake? You know, I, I, I don't feel right about risking a couple million dollars of taxpayer dollars. But we said it on topic, we should, we had this discussion, so, so I think there's even a higher peak put out last summer, and we didn't have this proposal then. And it just, I think we gotta keep the ball rolling and, and down the road, we could always, we, as we got unsolicited, unsolicited offer from whoever the developer company, I mean, somebody has another offer, we can always re- entertain that, but for today, I think we have to keep that ball rolling.
Mr. Smith?
And I'd like to see, uh, spill more information on what, what Impact Seven, uh, you've done, you've done diligence and, uh, and we've been, uh, too hasty to, uh, reject it this early. And we've got plenty of time, uh, and you, we're only talking about August, September, so. Maybe we'd better time that, uh, work together and see, see if we can, uh, do this project.
Mr. Better?
Yeah, uh, thank you, uh, yeah, I, although I'm disappointed with the, with the offer of eighty thousand dollars of, of, that's a real estate in the border, Highway twenty-seven in the Flankwell River. I feel that's, or far more than that. But, um, you know, we haven't talked about a counteroffer here at all. Negotiations here at what the reverse, so I think, uh, maybe reject, I think at this point, we're not being our best to these.
Mr. Anderson?
I, I would state that it would be hard to counteroffer because this isn't even really an offer at the moment right now. This is, we may offer this in the future, so it'd be really hard to enter the negotiations if, uh, we don't have a firm answer right now. So it sounds like they don't have firm numbers. And I just, I can't see gambling a couple million dollars that either way this building's have, gonna have to be torn down. And if we push the timeline out, even for them to get the construction done, done, it sounds like it could be a year and a half, two years down the road. I think we'd be doing a disservice to the county if we lost that couple of million dollars that we have right now. If we gave that back because we dropped our feet and didn't make a decision and we held on. And look at the, the school projects that's been going on for a long time, and still doesn't have their, their housing in there. I think we wanna get some action done. If you drag your feet, you're just gonna increase the cost of tear down and lose that money.
Mr. Slater?
Well, basically, looking at their timeline there, I would imagine by securing R E D O financing, that would be the drop dead point where it's either gold or stock. And that still gives us fifteen months, at least, to deal with the other problems. We've still gotta do research on getting rid of the asbestos. I looked in that thing and I saw this huge price for asbestos in the caulking, asbestos in the windows. I've never heard of asbestos being in the window, maybe fifty years, I've never heard of it, maybe it is, I don't know. Anyhow, I think we end up with a fall date, or November date, or October date. They either come back and give us an offer, or we proceed with demolition. Still gives us fifteen months.
Mr. DeShaw?
This is a double-edged sword, I mean. In a lot of ways. But the biggest fear in this deal is, this gets kicked around, so we're heading for a run. Now, we're gonna go forward from there and do the rest of these studies. We wind up in the middle of next summer before something's solidified to tear this down because they didn't get this on the case. They don't take it. Now the contractor that's got to tear it down is in the middle of five or six big projects. So the tear down gets forced off to the spring of twenty-five, and now it's gonna land on the tax credits. We already have one that'll land on the tax credit, and that will be decided.
Mr. Houser?
Yeah, so, well, we need to find out what it's gonna actual number, something to get what the cost of asbestos removal is and also tear down. I mean, that would, if you get those figures, that would give us complete evidence, so working numbers. Move forward either, say, okay, here's what we got, and if we can get a contract to tear it down, with these figures, or, you know, nine contracts. And we still can deal with Impact Seven after the fact if you want. But it's not, a lot gonna send you a squashed down timeframe. That's the thing I don't want.
Anybody else? Mr. Whitaker?
I'll call the question. Just, just, uh, for your preparation, I heard this is what happens, that, that asbestos study is going to be done, uh, in May, I believe. So, until you get that determination, what's out there, you can't put it out for bids. So that's happening in May, once the marshfield bank takes, uh, purchase.
Then we have to, after that part, tag, and once it's done, we still have to try to find somewhere you can get a estimate for it.
It sounds like the end of December.
Yes, the best for, as far as asbestos, do you see how much there is, has to have reward?
Correct.
Okay. Then we gotta have, uh, our people.
And we should watch.
Correct. Correct. Last one, take time. Go ahead.
Yeah, um, you suppose it possible we could approach Marshfield as far as an extension? Is that a problem? Yeah, it is. It is possible, I don't know what their opinion on that would be.
The dog didn't watch.
I'm talking, yeah, that's what I thought it was.
Maybe it's, we didn't negotiate at all. The dog didn't watch. You know, I, I remember saying here, was it, um, Hossville, I said, or was it name? Huh?
You claim.
Yeah. We actually refused to, uh, renegotiate, we spent time, or anything with that time.
Is that J F R B one, Marshfield?
I'm sure.
He has a letter to that, I think, that just something.
No, but he, I didn't get a letter to that, I have. He did not, he didn't, didn't want, he said it was not negotiated. It's all I can tell you. It's all I could tell him. Let me try again, I mean, there's nothing locked.
Call it, we're ready, come see it. You ready? Yeah. As of May first, we take control, so we're going to have more cost of creating, and power on just to keep the building. Marshall's going to quit paying bills. It's going to start costing us money, May first, just to hold the building. We're going to have to keep our, there's going to have to be some parts of it still heated or do whatever. Because you can't just shut it off, and then it can cost us so much a month just to keep the building. Like, you know, the taxpayers' money that we're paying up, some empty building that's doing nothing. I had heard that we're lucky to be anywhere from twenty to thirty grand a month from the run. Who knows what we're going to go on? And this is costly, we got to pay.
Remember the difference between the money that we have in the windown fund and what it's going to cost to tear it down is taxpayer money too, right?
No, it's more from clinic pay us.
What's that?
That windown money comes from Marshall Clinic.
Hey. But all the estimates we now have is it's going to cost more than the Marshall money. So how much are we going to have to sell that building for just to get our money back?
What we do is we still hang on to it, and the money that we pay bills out of is going to come out of the windown fund. Every month we hang on to it, the windown balance is going to decrease.
I don't think it's an, is that an allowable cost? Is that... The...
Utilities, I believe?
Utilities for, are not an allowable cost in the windown.
I believe they are, because it's cost enough. It's from somewhere.
Mr. Regal?
Oh, yes, Mr. Chairman, I got a question for Impact Seven, uh, right along with this discussion. If, if it was completely demolished at the Marshall Clinic, how many costs? Are you still interested in empty lot?
We, we would be, but that's a lot on the tiny. And you have to remember that, um, like I mentioned before, one of the advantages of having a building there is that we can get some additional tax credits and additional money coming into the project, um, for, for the build up. The building isn't there, that funding source isn't there anymore either. And, you know, two million dollars or so goes a long way to making a project work. So that's...
Right, that's that, that's the wonderful part.
That's why we were prepared to just explore the, um, explore this first with the initial building. Um, it has the added benefit of potentially saving the county money. We still have time to tear it down, but, um, but it could bring in some additional money for the project. A new, a new construction, um, that's not automatic, that doesn't mean that that works. Um, because we still have to have enough money coming in to build new too.
Anyone else want to speak?
Sorry, I should have pushed my button, my apologies, but, um, okay, so out of that windown fund, just to clarify, if we chose to go another route other than tear it down, what are we looking at for money? So then, if that was the case, that money that's in that windown fund goes back to Marshall Clinic, correct? What have we taken out of that fund already for studies, et cetera, that's going to have to be paid back to that company? If it's been used, we don't have to put it back.
No, for example, for the, uh, it was good, but, uh, the... The money that was on the price, it was thirty, six thousand dollars. If it was anything that was, uh, potentially not included, we've got to do a question. We asked for, received permission to use it.
Okay. So that, what's left to go back, there's nothing that we would, that we're aware of that we would go back into that fund?
That's correct.
Eighty thousand, you're going to sell the land for eight thousand dollars?
And proceeds go back to them?
I think eighty thousand would have to be paid back to them. Because that would be, uh, what was it, a windown fund? So, how much?
Is there any option available for, let's say, an offer, not an offer to purchase, but a, an option to purchase, where you would put, uh, some money down for a three month period or whatever? That would be forfeit if you, if you didn't buy through it, it would be an option. That, um, I think that happens.
We would consider that. We would consider that. The other thing too, I just mentioned too, is, um, whether this is helpful or not, but one of, um, a lot of hospitals and clinics', um, goals is affordable health, affordable housing because it's so critical to health outcomes, and that, that's part of their mission. So, um, I wouldn't, you know, it, it might be valuable to ask Marshall Clinic or have us ask them if they would be, if they'd be willing to be involved with us in a partnership there. To remember, that's where the tech college would go, tech college trains a lot of the people, um, and this is housing. And, um, I just know we've, in fact, we've got investments for housing before from hospitals, um, just, just to build them. So, um, I, I don't think that's, um, it's not an unreasonable or uncommon ask.
So, how quickly would a, would a, would you be able to fuck with a, perhaps, an option, a proposal?
Yeah, we either do.
Well, we have a, we have another board meeting coming up in a couple weeks, is that right? Do we do it tomorrow?
April twenty fifth.
So, perhaps it could be prudent to, uh, to make a motion to postpone the, by the vote, uh, April twenty fifth board meeting, or, you know, have a... See if there's another possibility.
Mr. Under shoots?
Again, my motion is to reject the current proposal, any future proposals, we can still consider on their own merits. So, this isn't to reject all proposals forever, it's to reject the current proposal as opposed to today. We continue on our, our time.
That motion also includes a commitment to demolishing the building, right?
Correct, but we can change that course if a different proposal was a different route. But we might as well continue, keep the clock rolling in our favor. And, I mean, again, other proposals come in, we can reconsider, and, and wherever on that point, if we have the survey done, if we have others requesting the timeline, like Terry said, we won't just call up the contractor and say, come out tomorrow, I need you to come. That could be months, or maybe even a year, I know a contractor that's a year out.
But two weeks is not an unreasonable amount of time for postpone to make a vote on this.
We can reconsider.
Let's make sure we're going to have a...
I don't make a motion to postpone to the X Ray Department if they're trying that.
Yeah, so this, the motion is to postpone the decision on this until April twenty five, twenty twenty three.
Vote on this motion.
So, the motion by one, again, seconded by Tyler, to postpone the, the vote on this to the April twenty five, twenty twenty three. Is that what we're right, uh, this motion?
Correct.
Would you make a motion against...
Yes, uh, it's to postpone the decision on Mr. Under shoots' motion until April twenty five, twenty twenty three.
It's a different motion. Mr. Phil Under shoots?
No.
Mr. John Under shoots?
No.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
No.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Kayla?
No.
Mr. Hanson?
Yes.
Ms. Good?
Yes.
Mr. Willingham?
Yes.
Mr. Raven?
Yes.
Mr. Goodus?
No.
Mr. Gussell? Mr. Biller?
No.
Mr. Rassack?
No.
Mr. Howser?
No.
Mr. Wedwick?
No.
Mr. Stowe?
Yes.
Mr. Kater?
Yes.
Do we have eight yes, eleven no?
We have eight yes and eleven no, which means it's... Now, we have a motion on the floor?
Read the motions again. Motion by John Under shoots to an executive... To reject Impact Seven proposal and postpone the demolition of the hospital.
Mr. Kater, Mr. Goodus?
Ten yes, nine no. Passed by majority vote.
Um, you guys all, um, received, uh, annual conference, um, if you're willing or want to go, let me know. Um, that's the, you can, we just, the neighbors opened, uh, the house that I can get from...
Okay, and our April twenty fifth meeting will be at seven P M. Any other announcements? Another motion, jury, to be in order? All favor, Dan. And right, jury?